Excellent, so I'll call the meeting to order here at five forty-five P M. Um, as you'll notice, the um, Alderman is not joining us this evening. Um, so we can, and I'll be looking for a a motion for an acting chair um, to be to be placed, to be called for this meeting. Um, so can I get a motion um, with a nomination for an acting chair, please?
I'll make a motion to nominate Brad as the acting chair.
Second.
Thank you. Making notes here, and any other um nominations? If not, can I take a vote on uh Mister Schweiger being the acting chair of the meeting, please?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Mister Schweiger, you're the chap, acting chair for the meeting. Thank you.
I'm a little terrified with Chris's enthusiasm.
You're welcome.
Excellent, so in terms of the the roll call, I can just run through that. Uh, as mentioned, uh Chairman is excused, Mister Schweiger.
Um, I suppose have we, we need to call the uh meeting to order, take role.
Yes, um, I can uh go through the roll call, um, Miss Steele.
Here.
Ms. Plorus.
Here.
Mister Conrad.
Present.
Acting Chair Schweiger.
Present.
Thank you.
I'm assuming we all have had a chance to review the uh minutes from April twenty-eighth. Are there any errors or corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Hearing none opposed, the minutes are approved. Um, that moves us into the public hearing uh section. We have um Patrick and Sarah Richards at uh one four zero nine. Is it um, the Ponset Trail are requesting a variance um from the uh ordinance? Section four eight zero dash two four sub D sub four sub D um requesting a shore yard setback. For the purpose of building a new screen porch with a second uh floor deck at the rear of the property.
Actually, that one four zero eight.
Yeah, oh, what did I say?
Oh, nine.
There we go, one four zero eight. And we have here, it says, Sarah, I'm assuming this is Patrick.
Correct.
Could um. Is there, I guess, first the the public hearing, um, if we do have. Doug, um, do we have anyone present? That wishes to speak?
Not that I am seeing, um, I'm actually at her right now, but we have this um, something set up at the city.
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, uh, there is nobody at the City Hall for the public.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
I think we do though have like three, four, five. Five letters in support.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, the, you know, everybody on on my side and then a couple people like uh across the channel. Um, you know, we're we're willing to, you know, sign letters of support for it.
Okay, great. Um, and Patrick, if you just want to tell us a little bit about what um, what you, what you want to do and why?
So, in uh, in the back of the house, there is currently a deck um that I would guess was built. Um, after the variance rules existed, but without uh a proper permit, based on the fact that it 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 sits on. Like, none of the the overlays of the uh of the the building, um, you know, anywhere, uh. And it was potentially done by the homeowner. I I I don't know, I can't find any any evidence of it uh when I'm when looking through the um. The file at City Hall or anything that I have personally, I mean, we just purchased the house in the last uh, in the last year or so. Um, and it is currently putting a decent amount of strain on the house because of how it's, you know, attached, which there are a few pictures. Uh, i- in my request, uh, that kind of show where it's sagging off of the house. Um. So, uh, we're we're hoping to uh, you know, kind of. A, get get the house up to code or being allowed to have at least wha- what's here. Um, fix what it is and then, you know, expand uh laterally uh along the face of the house. Um, to add a little bit more uh usable space to what is a very weird house and a very weird lot. Um, you know, the the front of the house is already within the thirty feet of uh of the road. The back of the house is already within uh the fifty feet of the um, the meander line. Um, and if you were to actually like, take the lot and, you know, on either side of the house, we're within half a foot. Of the seven-foot side yard um restriction. Um, and so if you were to actually, you know, follow the, you know, what what the the um setbacks are. You know, we we'd be allowed to have a sixty-foot long house. Um, because there's just not that much, roughly a fifty-foot long house, because there's just not that much space in this very narrow plot. Um, and there's a turnaround uh right here that eats into what would be presumably, you know. Where there may have been some more setback distance previously. Um, and then, you know, I mean, the Belle Isle neighborhood was created um. And designed probably without these types of 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 rules in mind. Um, because simply put, I mean, most of the houses here probably live within these setbacks and um would be difficult to alter. Following uh the codes as they exist now, and I understand why they exist for most neighborhoods, most houses on the water. Um, but unfortunately, because, you know, Manona decided to carve these, these uh, these channels and 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 put housing here, which is great, I love, I love the house. Um, but like, i- i- they just, it creates a very, very challenging set of lots to kind of govern with respect to the very, or the setbacks. Um. You know, we are hoping to add the screened-in porch because between the, you know, less than two-year-old running around and the dogs that we have. Um. We would like to be able to be outside, experience the backyard without worrying that the dogs are taken off or the babies falling in the water. Um, and I I honestly don't know the rules about fences and backyards, but um literally every single house on my block on this side of the channel. Um, doesn't have a fence, I, it wouldn't surprise me if it was somehow against the code or something, I don't know. Um, but it certainly would uh probably get more negative reactions out of my neighbors than the screened-in porch. Um, and then the deck on top of it, um, we already have the the exit up top. Um, and the hope was to be able to put a second exit in the event of uh an emergency. On that we could get out of the house as fast as possible without using a centrally located stairwell that may potentially also be um compromised in the event of an emergency. Think that was kind of my spiel. Anybody have any questions?
That's exactly where we're going. Um, if there's no one else um to start to speak um on the applicant, uh for the applicant. Um, I think that moves us into consideration of the action. Um. I guess I have the first question, how much of a, how much of a variance?
I'm sorry, I I didn't hear that.
Sorry, how much of a variance are you, are you, are you requesting?
I I guess I don't understand the question, like, like, what?
What I'm trying to find, uh, what I'm trying to figure out is how, how much, how far into the shore yard setback um are you requesting to go?
Oh, I see. Um, so actually, the the plan is not to get any closer um than the deck that's currently hanging off the house exists. We're actually going to be a shade uh further away from the water. Now, I will concede that because it spans the entire width of the house, it'll be a bigger, um, like, it'll take up more space in the backyard than what exists currently. Um, but because of the orientation of the house with respect to the meander line. Um, the corner of the house that the deck is currently built on is the closest part of the house to the meander line. So at no point in time would the rest of the the porch slash deck get any closer than what already exists.
So are we talking about twenty-eight feet? Into the setback? Doug, do you know the measurements?
Um, so if you, if you take a look at um, the uh, the plat. The plat will tell you that it, that the deck is currently twenty-two-point-five feet to the meander line at its closest.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the new porch, uh, the plan would be. To get no close, or would be to be a- at its closest twenty-two-point-seven something away, so just a a hair further away from the meander line.
Yeah, and the um, the shore yard setback is going to be fifty-five-zero feet from the meander line, um, so it is going to be twenty-seven and change for for that setback.
What year was the original home uh built?
It was built, built in nineteen sixty-nine.
Okay.
Doug, can you confirm that in nineteen sixty-nine, what? Was the um, the existing deck, um. Uh, was it already in violation, or was it, was there no such? Um, setback requirement at that time?
So I can't say exactly when the the fifty-foot um shore yard setback came in um, in terms of the the timeline, but. As the applicant mentioned, um, the details and the permits on that structure and that deck is pretty thin on the ground. Um, in terms of when it was done and and how it was permitted, so um, it's difficult to put an exact date on it, but I. I think as is, as has been mentioned from some of the, you know, failings and the shortcomings of the the construction, I I think it's fair to assume that. Um, it maybe didn't follow all building codes when it was completed.
And then if you also take a look um at the, or i- if you have the pictures in front of you, if you take a look, um. It it's at least pretty clear to me, but maybe I'm I'm wrong, that there was a small deck. Just like even with the 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 face of the house, that was then added on to after the fact. So initially, when the house was built, it was probably built. Um, even, and that's where the 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 deck is kind of falling off the house. Um, so initially, it was probably built at least consistent with the the line on the house. Um, and then expanded upon after that, so I I would guess it was after sixty-nine, just because they wouldn't have. Added on a poorly added-on thing while they were building the house. At least that would be my guess.
Mister Richards, did you, I presume that when you purchased the house, you did, you were not aware of the setback? And uh, I imagine you were not aware that this porch was, was um built without a permit, is that?
Oh, certainly not. Uh, so having, having this been my, the first house I've ever, ever purchased and really the only house I ever looked at. Um, I was very green, uh, it was also done off-market without a Realtor, um, which is, you know, on me, not your guys' fault that, you know, I did it that way. Um, but you know, it was, we we lived two doors down, um, we knew, we knew the people selling the house, um, and uh, you know, a year ago, things were pretty crazy, so. Um, whatever I could do to prevent other people from having access to the house I was kind of doing, but I definitely did not know. Um, about the setback rules at all, um, and certainly not uh about the. Um, like, and how poor shape the, you know, the deck was and whether or not it was permitted.
Okay, thank you.
So did you have to put in this foam?
Yeah, yeah, this.
Animals or what have you?
Yeah, well, in the, the negative, the negative like twenty-degree day uh this winter. Um, we found out why there were these really, really weird four-by-fours butted up against the house. Um, it was because it was preventing airflow and animals from, that, I mean, we removed the four-by-fours because they were rotting the the siding, as you can see. Um, and so, yo, um, we uh, I got, I got to go uh crawling in the, in the crawl space to uh. To shore up those holes in the foundation with, you know, spray foam, I mean, it's not, it's not a fix, it's just preventing the pipes from freezing in the bathroom that sits above it.
When the home was built, the second floor butted out above the first floor in the back? And that was the original home, they did it, they constructed it that way?
Uh, I believe so. Um, I believe that that, I I I saw no plans at City Hall that would have suggested that they cantilevered it out after the fact. Um, so I, I mean, why they did it, couldn't tell you, um, but they did it. Seems, seems a little strange, looks weird to me, but.
Shape of your house is very unique.
Very, very unique, yeah, it was very clearly done by an architect. Um, some of the shapes of windows in this thing are uh pretty legendary.
So has anyone commented about whether or not that's safe to have the second floor butt out like that? Have you had a contractor say anything about that?
Um, so we 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 had uh someone who does like engineer consulting kind of, kind of come by. Um, when we were kind of exploring how how this would work, um. And he he didn't suggest um that what exists is unsafe. Um, he was surprised at the engineering that went into it, I guess, uh, because it is, it is. I I think the the term is cantilevered, cantilevered pretty far out from, I mean, four, it four feet's a pretty big cantilever. Um, away from, you know, the first floor of a house.
Do you feel safe in this house? I don't know, I mean structurally?
Yes, 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 structurally, I'm not worried about the house needing to be rebuilt. Um, you know, a- as we have, you know, explored and updated. Um, I'll I'll be honest, that the previous owners um did things a slightly different way, or maybe it was the owners before that. Um, but like, we have a, a gas fireplace downstairs that was not designed as a gas fireplace. And the gas for that fireplace, that line, um. It, it is run completely outside of the house, underground at points. And is rusting, so we've, we've turned that off until we can potentially, you know. Fix that, because it it seemed, um. I mean, blatantly unsafe, irresponsible, I mean, like, like, you can, you name the thing, but um. Also, like, the roof currently has four different ages of roof on it, because. That was only addressed whenever there was a problem, that that's kind of at least what it seems to us is like. The previous owners um were only interested in fixing something, and they fixed it the right way when it was a problem. But only when it was a problem, um, not like, hey, let's just re-roof the house because there's a leak over here. It's, hey, we'll re-roof this section of the house because it's leaking over here. And we found that that's pretty consistent with how they did a lot of different things, so.
Do you feel safe on the deck right now, this, the?
Um, well, uh, I have a little bit more of a laissez-faire attitude about, about things. Um, like, I'll hang out on the deck, uh, my wife is not thrilled um about hanging out on the deck. Um, and the baby is not allowed on the deck when I'm hanging on the deck. Um. So, I mean, the the building inspector, uh, when he came in, definitely said, or like the, when we had that inspection done for the house, he definitely said that the deck needed to be addressed. Um, and we did some things to kind of stabilize it, um. Because like, I mean, it was really rickety before, um. But uh. But like, do I think it's going to fall off the house soon? No. Do I think if we never addressed it, m- might it? Yeah, I mean, eventually, i- it would, I mean, it's just a wood deck, so it's not like it's, you know, bulletproof material.
Mm-hmm.
And it only is supported, you know, again, attached to the cantilever, and then with those two, two, um. Uh, I think it's four-by-fours uh out in the yard.
Does this, does putting a walled structure um further out from the house affect our stormwater permits? Or how we handle those? I wasn't able to get very deep into researching it, but I know we had touched on it last month a little bit after the meeting.
Yeah, so the stormwater um is typically covered by the impervious um square footage of the, of the site, so. This one um with the fact that it is going to be an enclosed lower level with the screen porch coming out, that would increase that. Um, with this, you know, the single-family lots, um, depending upon the size, are allowed sixty-five to seventy percent impervious. So I don't see that being a problem with this one. Um, really, the the main focus is going to be. Um, you know, there'll be an increase in the utility cost, uh, for example, so all these permits do go through um Brad at at the city. Um, and he just addresses those, so there's, there's going to be an adjustment, because there is um a net increase in impervious, but nothing more than that.
Do we know how much close, um, how much closer to to the meander line? Um, this would bring um this property to the the neighbors?
Um, so how, how close towards each of my neighbors, the the edge of the the porch would be? Um, kind of laterally?
Is it, is this bringing your, is this bringing the rear, um, the rear of the deck any, any uh closer to the water than eh, than in your neighbors are are existing? Are you even closer?
Uh, so, so, so that's a tough question for me to answer, because the, the uh channel does not follow a straight line. That it like, does not follow the straight line that that exists behind my um, my property. It it bends to be a little bit more forgiving uh down, down the channel. Um, and then the calls who had a variance uh last year for a somewhat similar uh situation. Um, just have a much longer lot that than we do, so I believe the calls, um, while they were completely in the me, or within the setback as well. Are still further away than what what we're proposing. Um. Uh, but I can't, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm pretty certain of that based on having looked over the calls uh variance request. I can't intelligently speak down the channel, but I would, I would bet that we are closer than most of my neighbors, just because most of my neighbors. Um, the way that the channel and um uh road kind of diverge, they're at their closest. Here, at this property. Um, so everybody else has more distance yard or, you know, meander to street than I do. Now, across the channel, that's probably a different uh scenario, directly across the channel. Um, I believe that the the actual house is closer to the meander than uh we have. Like, than than what we're proposing, I'm not positive of that, um, but it it would be very close if not, if not. And they also have a secondary structure that's, you know, basically on top of the water, for what it's worth.
Doug, um, I mean, obviously, we're here because a variance is required, but. I'm just curious, by virtue of the fact that the deck is, is already there, and he's not going to be extending the first floor beyond the second floor deck. It, is this? Is he entitled to to some sort of like legal non-conforming, like, like, almost like being grandfathered in?
So that, there's a couple elements here, the, the first being kind of the connection um and the straightening off effectively of the structure. Um, the sec, with the cantilever, um, that is an expansion of a non-conformity, um, just because it still would be within the setbacks. Um, that addition would be, um, and then the, obviously, the the screen porch addition does, um, while not extending closer to the, towards the water. Um, is a um larger area, you know, because it does span the the full width of the house, so. Both elements would um require that, you know, the, it doesn't have the, the grandfather status would allow for a rebuild um without an expansion. So a hypothetical rebuild of of the deck, for example, with the same footprint, but not to either enclose it or to um expand that any further.
I see, thank you. Wait, so even if he just rebuilt the deck, if he just rebuilt the deck, that would be permitted? If he then. Tried to put a screen porch beneath that replacement deck, that that would not be allowed without a variance?
The deck would be allowed um as shown on the site survey, so kind of the um, you know, the the narrow deck and then the larger platform um closer to the water. That could be rebuilt, same footprint or smaller, um, you know, if they just wanted to make, let's say, a hypothetical, um, a different shape. But there was a smaller footprint, the enclosure of the lower level, the first floor. Um, that additional four feet below the cantilever is an expansion of that non-conformity, so that would need, um, would need a variance, yes.
Thanks.
Just as a quick reminder, if they were to convert the the port, screened-in porch to something that was more substantial, they would need to pull permits, right?
Um, so from the city's perspective, the screen porch would be treated um as an enclosed space. Um, there may well be, you know, additional requirements from the building inspector's um viewpoint. I, I'm not sure, um, from that perspective, if this is treated more like an outdoor space or a quasi-outdoor space. Um, but from my perspective, because it would have walls and it would be an enclosure, um, you know, I I would deem that um permissible and and sort of already having that footprint, so. Um, for that to be enclosed, for me, would not be a huge departure. Um, if this were open, for example, and more of just a a lower-level deck, um, you know, without those walls. That's when, you know, I I'd sort of be in the same position again, um, but from my perspective, if a screen porch is converted. Um, unless that's a potential condition that the the board may choose to impose, um, it would not be an issue from from zoning.
So I can say that, um, this is, this is not a, we're trying to take six inches now and planning on taking six inches, you know, ten years down the line. That, like, this is kind of it in terms of our hopes and dreams for for, for, towards the water, because. Um, you know, I, again, I, I haven't lived in this house for very long, but I have lived two doors down for the past five years. Um, and I don't need to be building any closer to the uh. The the flood, the flooding than than I have, than I have already lived through, um, that, you know, I. I, what, I think it was three times that I I had to sandbag, maybe it was only twice that I had to sandbag the backyard, but um, that was more than enough. So, yeah, the the idea with the this, this structure would be, um. That the, the, the screen, the, the deck for the screened-in porch, so the first floor screened-in porch level would be level with the inside of the house, which is. Uh, about two feet off the ground, um, so there would be a dead space under the top of, like, under the the screened-in porch that if water came into. Um, you know, i- i- it, you know, it could come up without actually dealing damage or substantial damage to, you know, to the structure.
Do we have a sense of where we're struggling, or is anyone ready to make a um a motion?
Yeah, I just, you know, I have a statement that I'm, that's going through my head, and it's, you know, in particular with Belle Isle. Because things are so unique, the the shapes are unique, it's.
Because things are so unique, they're, the shapes are unique, it's, yet there's, well, it's notorious for being a area that floods and. At times catastrophically, and you wonder, because things were built before setbacks and all of these things, and, and this house is very. Uniquely shaped, as, as Ben stated earlier tonight, he's, how would it ever be possible to, if you had a, a, you know. A damage through a natural event or rotting as you're, as you're experiencing here. Uh, some rotting and animals coming, how do you even update or replace things if we have, you know? We're already outside of the setbacks, the house is already built outside of what's been said, and now, oh, you know, you just wanna fix it and update it and. You know, make it a more livable and enjoyable structure on a body of water. It, to me, it just feels like, I just don't, I don't have a problem with doing this, I don't see an issue with doing it, I don't know. You know, what the rest of the board is thinking, I would make a motion, but unless I don't get support for the motion.
Any further discussion on that point? Maybe for me, for, for, for me personally, I know it's, it's the unnecessary hardship, um, is where I'm at, but that's usually where I'm at, cuz I'm, eh, you know, I think that the lot's narrow. Um, you know, I'm mindful of that area and the, the cul-de-sac turnaround that limits setbacks as well. It's, it's kind of unique in that, I mean, the, the entire area has just some unique, uh, very unique, each lot is some, it's just a little bit different. Um, so, eh, you know, to me, that, you know, that ticks the box, um. And I think it's the, whether or not there's a, if the board finds there's a hardship.
I think on the one hand, they're gonna have to replace the deck, it's a safety issue, and they have a door that leads out, so you can't just. Um, exit. Um, or they'd have to shut off that door, but I think they have to replace some sort of structure.
Right, and I don't, I don't think that the replacement of the structure isn't, I, I don't think is the issue, given Doug's comments, cuz they could, I think they could replace it, like for like. Um, it, but whether or not, whether or not there's a hardship that, that justifies the expansion um on the existing non-conforming structure.
You know, I get, I guess, at least, you know, if I'm pleading my case, um, we would really, really love to have the, the safety net of. A second way, like, a, a way out of the house from the second floor that is not the centrally located stairwell in a house where we found things like. A gas line that is buried in dirt, I mean, like, I. We keep finding these weird little things, I mean, like, yeah, the gas would spring a leak outside. But, I mean, are there other weird things about this house that have been, you know, done not to code? That were, that we just haven't, haven't found yet, um, so I mean, the peace of mind of having a, a second, you know. A way to get out of the house in the event that something was happening on the first floor, you know, would be great.
I mean, I guess my, I get all the safety stuff, that's, I mean, you wouldn't wanna host a Mifflin party on that deck, that's for sure.
No, definitely not.
You know, it's, it is, it's always the hardship, it's, it is for this committee every single time, is trying to find. Because we're stature, plural, state statutorily, you know, sort of confined into such a narrow definition of what a hardship is. And so, you know, having a larger, wider deck or, you know, spor- porch or outdoor space. Gets a little bit harder to justify that that's. You know, not having that is a hardship, and that's, that's where we struggle.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I understand that, um.
The only thing I'm struggling with right now and to get me over that hurdle, because everything else, I think.
So, so I mean, the, the, the house itself is odd, um, and we are, we are doing everything in our, in our. Possible uh ability to uh figure out how we can um. Maximize the space, um, the very odd spaces, um, but at the end of the day, um. You know, un- unless we want to stop it, one child, um. There's just not a whole lot of extra space in this house to, to live, um, during the winter, it gets, you know, really tough, um. But, you know, spring, summer, so- summer, fall, um, you know, having a little bit of extra space, um, you know, the bump out would give us, you know. Some more square footage to, you know, a little bit more storage space, a little bit more uh hangout space, um. But, I mean, it's, it, it, the house is, you know. Again, not efficiently organized in any way, shape, or form, um, and, and, you know, the, the, the hope is just, you know, to uh. To be able to, to, you know, make the house our home, um, you know, expands. Family, expand the house, I mean, just a little bit, um, again, not outside of kind of the spirit of the neighborhood, the spirit of, you know, kind of the designs of the house, um. You know, that, 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 that's kind of, you know, wh- wh- where we kind of view, um, the hardship, I mean, also. You know, containing, containing a little, a, a little one, you know, outside is, is challenging, um, I am. I run the Waypoint Public House from home while also watching, um, watching the little one, um, I am full-time dad while also running the business. Um, and so, a little bit of outside space or semi-outside space for her to run around where I don't have to, um. Don't have to worry about her falling in, i- i- into the channel is, you know, certainly would, would, would be some nice peace of mind, um. And, you know, like, eh, like Doug said, you know, just putting screens under what currently exists, um, would, would require a variance, so.
What would you guess the square footage of that bump out is?
Um, it's about four feet by the width of the house, the width of the house, I can grab real quick.
Oh, no, just the, just the round part.
But the, the deck?
Yeah.
Like, the, the square footage of the deck?
That's there right now.
Um, gosh, that's tough, because it's such an odd shape.
Or even the width of it, is it?
That, that'll be. Uh, a little wider than eleven feet, it looks like, I mean, cuz the, the foot, because where, where the, the deck. Hits the, hits the house is eleven feet wide, and the deck gets just a touch wider than that, so between an eleven and twelve feet, um, is, is how wide the, the deck that currently exists is. I mean, again, would be my guess, and then. Yeah, I. So, from the meander line, the house is thirty-six and the deck is twenty-two. So, I mean, that, it's not like, well, thirty-seven and twenty-two, so twelve, uh, fifteen, so roughly fifteen feet, uh. Off the, off the house towards the meander line. So fif- so let's say it's fifteen by twelve in an odd, you know, slightly rounded, slightly pentagon-shaped weird thing.
Is that a technical term?
I mean, there's nothing technical about this house.
Also, if, if it's a, oh, if it's roughly a circle and it's eleven feet in diameter, it's about ninety-five square feet. Does that help you, Beth?
Yeah, I guess what I was getting at is the, it's a permissible use, but um, it's. To rebuild it in the same footprint is um burdensome, cuz it's small, so it's not really. If you rebuild it exactly as it is, it's not really usable.
And it's small, it also, like, for what it's worth, the house is, is super angular. All the windows, all the, the corners, everything is angular, for whatever reason. Ah, on the back of an angular, like, like, and angles is very clearly what the architect was going for when they designed this thing. And then they decide to slap a circular deck on the back of a very, I mean, it, it. I, I assure you, this thing is an eyesore, and um, and. Recreating it while it, on the back of some houses, it might look normal and regular and whatever. But it looks weird, having wa- I mean, like, with the whole theme of the house, so, yeah, I mean, I, I, I really. Wouldn't be thrilled about, about building exactly what exists, and then if you do kind of make it just a, a regular old rectangle off the, off the house, it gets even smaller. Um, so, yeah, I mean, the, the, the square footage on it gets, you know, very, very small.
So I think that, then, Beth, what you're saying is the. Helping with the unnecessary hardship is that it's burdensome, it's an un- it's unnecessarily burdensome to expect to. Rebuild it.
It may affect something that, you know, isn't super useful.
Mm-hmm.
Cuz it's not an inconsidera- uh, inconsiderable uh cost, I mean, it's, it's going to be expensive to do it, um, but to do it. You know, just to, to replace that, you know. I mean, it needs to happen because otherwise it's gonna hurt, hurt the, uh, hurt the house, but.
So the option then is to either just ta- tear it down, because it's not safe, and just not rebuild anything, um. Or. Which doesn't seem reasonable, or to have you build it exactly as is, which feels unnecessarily burdensome. Which, to me, meets the uh unnecessary hardship. Um, it, at least for me and my lens, that's how I view it. Um, so I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion, and if somebody wants to stop me, go ahead. But I'm um moving to approve this variance, uh, request. And for reasons why I spoke about the unnecessary hardship, I think it's a very unique uh property limitation. Um, not that we're supposed to talk about how the house is on the property, but it is, um. Also making it quite unique and already way out of um conformity. And there's no harm to the public interest, there's people up and down Bell Isle that have given you support, um, and have, uh. Are fine with you building this, uh. Rebuilding this deck and, and putting in a screen porch.
A second.
Like, do I have a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, approved.
Thank you very much, folks, really appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting. Um, is that, is that the end of the meeting, I, again?
That's it.
Anything like this before, we don't really know when to leave.
Yep, you're, you're excused, we just have to do some administrative things, um, before we, we adjourn, but you're, you're, you're free to go.
Okay, do I need to pick up anything from anywhere, like, is there paperwork that now needs to happen?
I'll, I'll be in touch, um, probably early next week with, um, stamped approvals, um, and I'll email those over to you, including the building inspector, so he'll know. Um, when you come through to pull, pull permits, um, what has been approved. And, um, so it's cleared zoning, but you'll still need to go through building, um, inspection and permitting for that, but I'll, I'll be in touch.
Okay, sounds great, thank you very much, Doug, thank you very much, everybody else, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, um, if, uh, next meeting update, um, June sixteenth and July twenty-one, do we get out that anything, um, anticipated there?
I'm expecting, um, so Alden Moore is, um, out of the country, um, during that, that June meeting, um, so at this point, I'm planning to cancel that. Um, and we'll, we'll push all applications here to the July meeting, um, I've had a couple people potentially interested. Uh, nobody that's at the point of submitting yet anyway, um, so I think it's safe to assume we'll, we'll cancel that June sixteenth meeting.
Okay. Um, updates, uh, our discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts?
Nothing from staff.
Uh, any updates on sustainability?
Nothing from me.
Okay. Um, do we have any else we need to discuss before we adjourn? Anyone?
Did a great job, Brett.
That one, I think, was a, like, you know, there was, it wa- it was tough to get that hardship in there, but do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Chris. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.